Meeting of the City of Scranton zoning hearing board will now come to order. Will the secretary please take role?
Here.
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 Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. In accordance with the Pennsylvania State Sunshine Law, this board shall render its decision on each case either at the end of each hearing or within forty-five days of the hearing. If you are to give testimony in a case, please come to the podium, raise your right hand, and wait to be sworn in. After being sworn in, state your name and address and proceed with your testimony. Also, anyone given testimony who does not become a party to the case may obtain a written decision from the zoning office. I also have two announcements of law. If you are granted a variance or a special exception, you must wait thirty days from the date of our decision to obtain the necessary permits to start work. However, you may obtain a permit sooner by signing a waiver that any work done during that thirty-day period is at your own risk. A favorable decision by this board shall expire twelve months from the date of said authorization in accordance with Section 111i of this ordinance. If you fail to obtain the necessary permits or do not comply with any or all conditions of said authorization, you must seek an extension. Is there any remarks? The attestation and verification of postings?
I have an affidavit from Donald J. King, acting zoning officer of the city of Scranton, who solemnly swears that he posted the notice of zoning hearing posters and made written notice via first-class mail to the following. Joseph Bonacci, 1344 North Washington Avenue. Peter Spano, 1554 Sanderson Avenue. Garrick Grupa, 305 Pittston Avenue. Another Garrick Grupa at 424 South Webster Avenue. And Yuri Abdur Hamaf, as agent for Alina Filarova, and that is at 1021 Richmont Street.
Thank you, Dan. And case number two, the Peter Spano for the gas station was continued to the following month, so if there is anybody here for the gas station one, it is going to be continued till next month. No. What was that, sir? I'm sorry.
This morning. It was posted on the Green Ridge Neighborhood website as of about eleven o'clock, eleven-thirty, in that range.
Next.
November.
It's supposed to be next month, if they come. It doesn't mean they're definitely going to come, but it's continued till next month.
Ifs, our next meeting's November thirtieth.
It's the second Wednesday of every month. Can we please call the first case?
Joseph Bonacci seeks variance to convert dental office into small-scale beer brewing and nano-brewery and tasting room at 1344 North Washington Avenue. It's an R-2O zone.
Will you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths to help you God?
It is.
Name and address, please.
Joseph Bonacci, 541 Cortez Road, Jefferson Township, Pennsylvania, 18436.
Are you going to speak to? Okay, you want to?
Yeah, this is my colleague, Ed Generose.
Ed Generose, 302 Drake Street, Old Forge, Pennsylvania, 18518.
Spell your last name, please.
Before you say anything, I just wanted to... You don't have a parking plan? There's nothing here? Do you have... Did you bring anything with you?
Parking lot, you said?
A parking plan. We don't have a parking plan or...
I don't have one. There's an existing parking lot.
Yeah, there's... This is a dentist office with an existing parking lot, so they're not changing the parking plan.
Yeah. My GPS took me two buildings away, so I didn't get to see the parking plan.
If you pull in the rear, I believe it is. The other guy's...
How many spots are there?
It's in the back, right?
There's seven spots.
Correct.
Okay, so there are sufficient spot... I don't know how many spots you need for a wine taste or brewing tasting. Okay, you can continue.
Go ahead, guys.
Basically, we're looking for acceptance to, like the application says, transform an existing dental office that had two chairs, waiting room, and a parking lot into this... It's a brewery by title from the TTB. It'll also serve as a small tasting room. Everything, obviously, is brewed on-site. No bottling or packaging. Obviously, it's a smaller facility. So again, the main purpose would be to have a tasting room for the community, for the public.
Now, you say taste, and you mean like to sell it to somebody to taste it?
For sale. For sale, correct. Right now, there's a pretty lengthy process to get approved to do this with the TTB. We don't have acceptance from them yet. It takes a couple of months. We're obviously going through this first. You need to go through the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, so there are a couple of steps to get... to make this legal, but that is the goal, yeah. From the street view of the building, it appears to be a three-story...
So the bottom floor?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Yep, the second... The first floor, which would be from the back parking lot, appears to be the second floor from the street. That's where the dentist's office was, and that would basically be tasting rooms, what it'd be called.
So you plan on building like a bar in here and then serving people? Is that what you're looking to do or...?
It would have a serving area, yes. It's not going to look like your traditional bar with stools and whatnot. It's just there needs to be a tap system of some sorts connected to the operations below in the basement.
In order to sample?
Correct.
Almost like a concession window. The person would come up to the concession window, and the beer would be behind there with the bartender.
Some differences... The type of classification we're getting or applying for with the TTB and the Liquor Control Board is called a brewery. It's different than a brew pub. So a brew pub, for example, are more common where it's a full restaurant with a menu that could be open until 2:00 a.m. We're specifically called a brewery, which means we can't be open past 10:00 p.m. And obviously, we only need seating for ten people. So it's a smaller-scale operation.
How about as far as... There'll be nothing outside, no tables outside or anything like that? Everything's going to be inside the building?
There's no plans for tables outside. There is a front porch, but it's not going to be accessible.
And how about as far as music or anything like that?
I mean, the goal would be to have some type of sound inside, yeah, but...
But like live music or just...?
No, there really isn't space for it. That's not really the goal.
I'm looking at the adjacent properties that are right next to it. They're kind of close. Okay, thank you.
Now, were you planning on just serving the beer that you brew there? Or were you planning on selling anything bottled or canned or anything?
On very rare occasions, we have the ability, and it might be able to speak more to this, on very rare occasions, we might be able to can on-site, which would be a very small release, kind of a special occasion. We won't have canning machines, bottling machines, so no, we won't be able to sell products in cans or bottles. If with this licensure from the government, we would be allowed to serve another brewery's beer in our facility. If they're made in Pennsylvania, right? And that would only be... We'd only allow to do that with one other, you know, beer that isn't ours.
And those would be served from bottles, obviously, or cans?
Well, that would only through the tap system.
So basically, no alcohol will be leaving the premises?
No. Right. We wouldn't be able to sell cases or there wouldn't be an operating six-pack shop. The one thing we could do is sell growlers, which is basically like a, you know, like a glass jug that someone could bring, and we'd just refill it for them.
What is the plan for signage lighting in? What are your hours going to be?
The hours would probably be between 2:00 and 3:00 p.m. Till 10:00 p.m. is the latest we're allowed to operate. At least for the first year, we plan on only be open for Thursday to Sunday. There's a lot of time and effort that goes into the actual brewing process, and because of how small our scale is, and there's just two of us, we just don't have the capacity to be brewing seven days a week and having, you know, the bigger scale that we maybe should have. So four days a week, open at the most, is the goal, you know, for the first year or two. I'm sorry, you said about lighting and signage. The only plans for signage right now is to just have something attached to the front of the building. We don't really have lawn space in the front yard. It would just be something attached to the second-floor building, which... Second floor from the street, it would appear.
How many employees do you think will be working in there?
Well, Ed will be on-site most of the time as a brewmaster, I guess you could say, not really involved in the first-floor operations, which would be, you know, a point-of-sale person and maybe one additional. So as far as employees, you're looking at three max.
And about ten stools, you're thinking?
There... We have to have seating for ten people. We technically won't have bar stools. It'll be more kind of laid-back table setting, maybe high tables, but we estimate between ten, in between ten and twenty seats of some sort.
What about the upstairs? What's currently upstairs right now?
It's a residential apartment with its own entry.
Does some... Is it occupied right now?
It's occupied right now, yeah.
And do they park in that back lot?
They don't, no.
Okay.
Dan, well, what are we looking at roundabout for parking with approximately three employees and, say, twenty seats?
Well, I think it would come under retail sales, which is one for every 200 square feet of floor area. Do you have any idea how big that second floor is?
We do have a drawing, actually, just like an AutoCAD sketch. It shouldn't be more than a thousand square feet. This one here? Roughly twenty-five by... Twenty-five?
While you're calculating, do you already own this building? Or are you planning about...
I do. I'm the owner, yeah.
Okay, so the tenants upstairs obviously know what's going...
Right.
To be going down?
And they're more of a temporary tenant. They kind of understand what's going on. If we get off the ground and running and it's... We would probably do away with the upstairs tenant. It's about 500 square feet for that serving area. Pretty much mirror image... Well, it'd be a little smaller in the basement where we'd be brewing, so...
So that would require three off-street parking spaces for that.
And the back of our...
Plus the employees, which is another two.
So this wouldn't come under tavern, the fact that it has to be approved by the LCB?
Has to be approved by the LCB.
But I'm saying so...
This is one of the steps.
No, I understand, but my question is, under our guidelines, it wouldn't fall under tavern on that page?
You could stretch it to be tavern.
I'm not trying to stop the project. I think it's a good idea, so I just want to get clarity in case...
Yeah, I had it as beverage bottling, because I didn't know they were selling to the public, but...
Yeah. I mean, my contention is, once he's selling it...
Right.
You know?
On that note, guys, is the primary goal to brew beer, distribute it elsewhere through another company? And the tasting room is more of an offering than necessarily a pub-style setting?
I would say the goal is basically that setting, that, I guess you can call it a pub-style setting. We don't have plans right off the bat to be mass distributing. Like I said, we're not going to have a canning or a bottling process. I guess the main goal is to show the local community, you know, what we have to offer and get people in the door and to try something different that we really don't see in the city.
What are the size bottles that will be served... They will be served out of?
I'm sorry?
Like, what are the size bottles or cups or whatever you're going to be serving?
Well, a pint would be your average... Yeah, a sampler would be a four-ounce glass. Yeah, in some higher alcohol content beers would be in a smaller glass, like a ten-ounce glass, so you have options.
So you're not bottling there?
Correct.
You're just pouring out of a tap into a glass?
Correct. And really, the business model that we're describing isn't something we plan to be doing for, you know, ten, twenty years. The right way to do it, especially if you're in it for the money, is really to go on bigger scale, larger equipment, bigger facility. We obviously wanted to start smaller, one, for financial reasons, but, two, we wanted to get into that, the community. We think it's nice to have some, this kind of storefront in a... Closer to a residential area and not necessarily a big warehouse. And the system we're using to brew with, it's called... It's a one BBL system, it's called. Basically, it's the smallest system you could legally use to be considered and licensed as a brewer. So it really... It'd be hard to even sustain bottling and canning with the system we're using up front, so it's really not the primary goal right now.
One BBL would be pretty much one keg per batch?
Thirty-one gallons. Or one keg.
Yeah. So pretty small scale as far as production?
Yeah, maybe small scale right now.
Is there anybody in the audience that wants to give testimony on this? Okay, there's not?
Oh, make a motion then. I did it again.
Did they get it?
Did you get my motion?
You got it.
Okay.
Second.
Made and seconded.
Mr. Gattens?
Well, I hope you all grow your business there and do well there, so I'm going to vote yes.
Well, our goal is to stay in Scranton, and we specifically wanted to be in the city. Like I said, I don't think this exists in the city, and so that's the goal.
I'm going to vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Newcomb?
Mrs. Newcomb, yes.
Mr. Newcomb, I'm sorry. Mr. Welsh?
Yes. Voted by this year, you've been approved. Good luck.
All right, thank you.
We call the second case, please.
Garrick Grupa LLC seeks variance to convert property to two-unit apartment building, 305 Pittston Ave., R-2O zone. Right, Cash.
You raise your right hands, please.
Rangesh.
What was that?
Rangesh Shah, 501 Highland Avenue, South Abington, Pennsylvania, 18411.
Just one second. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths to help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Rangesh Shah, 501 Highland Avenue, South Abington, PA, 18411. R-A-N-G-E-S-H.
And I'm attorney Jessica Pluscatch, on behalf of Mr. Shah.
Okay.
Is there any kind of a parking... I didn't get anything. All I got is just a lot layout in the back. I don't know what he just passed out, but is there a parking plan for this one, too?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a parking plan or any kind of a plan? I don't know what he's passing around.
I have an existing parking, which I already own it since my last...
Right in the microphone.
My apology. First, I purchased 305 Pittston Avenue in 2011. Two years later, I purchased 301-303 Pittston Avenue, which is a neighboring property. After going through zoning board over and over, zoning board required me to purchase or create enough parking in the back of the property. So I ended up buying two properties. 507 O'Connor Place, the parking lot size is sixteen by eighty, and right next to it, 508 O'Connor Place, the parking size, lot size is sixteen by eighty. They're both sits right next to each other behind. Goes from 301 Pittston Avenue all the way to the 314... No, I'm sorry, 317 Pittston Avenue, just pretty much all the way to the end of the block. So I have these two parking lots that covers over five-plus parking spots each parking lot, those two lots I purchased. There's enough parking in that to support 305 Pittston Avenue parking requirement. There is one parking spot could be used right behind the property itself, and I can use the two spots from behind the other lot that I have extra spaces.
If you're right, I can ask my client a few questions to clarify.
Sure, sure.
Okay. Now, Mr. Shah, why are you asking for this variance today?
Over the years, I had a 305 Pittston Avenue, which is, I purchased a while back, and it was a two-unit initially. When I purchased the property, most of the property that I have purchased in the city of Scranton, they were all condemned. What I do is I rehab the property and then make it presentable and bring it to current code. As per city code requirement, the property cannot be two-unit unless it has enough parking to support it. According to your requirement, it's 1.5 parking space per unit. So at the time when I purchased it, I was not having enough parking spot availability to come in the front of the zoning board to ask for a variance to convert that one-unit to two-unit.
You said when the property was initially condemned, before it was condemned, it was a two-unit?
Correct.
And would you say that that's a unique physical circumstance surrounding the property itself?
The way it sits, it does not have enough parking to support, according to the city requirement. It has to have a one-and-a-half parking spot per unit.
But the unit itself?
Yeah.
It's currently a two-unit?
It is currently two-unit, but I had no choice to make it one-unit.
Okay. Are there any meters there that are separate at this point?
There were two gas meters in the front of the building, and in the rear of the building, there were two electric meters. I was forced to make it one each.
Okay, per the building requirements?
Right.
Now, so you already did convert it back to...
I had to keep it as a two, a one-unit until I have...
The parking.
Officially allowed to do so.
Okay. So it's your intention today to convert it?
Yeah.
You're hoping for a variance?
See, in 2013, I purchased 301-303 Pittston Avenue. That was a four-unit building, and I had to go through the zoning board two times, and they were on a condition approval for having enough parking. So they required 200 square feet in the store itself. It's a 600-square-feet store. So for a store itself, I had to have a three parking. Then I have another three units right above it. I was required to have another four-and-a-half parking, so total seven-and-a-half parking was required from, you know, the zoning required for me. So they actually made it so as long as you could get enough parking, I would be able to get variance.
Well, let me ask you about the neighborhood itself. Would this at all alter the characteristic of the neighborhood by having a two-unit house?
At this time, everything remains the same. I have enough parking to support my case at this time, and physically, it would not change anything.
I mean, like the abutting houses, the neighboring houses. Would you, having a two-family dwelling in your house, would that alter the character of the neighborhood at all? Would it change anything?
It would not change anything. Everything will remain still the same.
Would it be a detriment to the public welfare? Would it cause harm to anyone by you having a multi-site dwelling unit?
It should not, actually. It will support it, and I feel it's more to support, bring more people into the town to, you know, like, if I put extra family in the town, it'll bring extra income to the city, and, you know, it just brings more revenue.
I do, in my purse. Absolutely. Oh, you're welcome. That would be all the testimony that I would have for my client, if you wanted to ask any questions.
Um, yeah. Behind the building that he's proposing, there's a big, huge lot. Now, there's an alley behind that, and then there's an alley, I think it's Ham... I don't even know, Ham Court or whatever the name of that alley is, on the other side, and the lot was completely full. When I turned into that lot, the... It was completely... It's falling apart, and I couldn't get in my first try. I actually had to back out and try again. There's a old metal, something from the house that sits on the cross street, whatever the cross street is in there. And then there's five spots. They don't look big enough to hold like a compact car, let alone my minivan. So I don't know what spots he's talking about and what lot he owns. He said he bought five hundred... What lots did you say you owned?
I could have something, if the variance were to be granted, that he would...
Because, I mean, this just says the front of the properties and then...
Couple of questions while they're checking that out. Care if you don't mind while you're looking at that. What's the square footage of the house?
The square footage of the house is... I have the size of the building up here.
We were given the size of the lot, not the house.
Right.
So I'll say 20 by 50.
20 by 24?
Well, it's bigger than 24 deep. Is that what you're showing?
20 by 24?
Yes.
Well, then, that alone doesn't meet the requirements of 600 square feet per apartment.
Well, I believe that's the first one, and the size of the buildings. That's the... It's 20 by 24 and 20 by 12.
That's...
I'm sorry. Let me just have a moment to look.
Even at the number I gave you, a generous number of 20 by 50, that's 1,000 square feet for the whole house.
Oh, here, size of the building, 36 by 26, and the other one is 20 by...
We're only doing one building, 305, right now.
Right, okay. I apologize.
I'm sorry, what was that again, attorney?
36 by 26. And I do have the building record here, and it does state that it was actually a two-family. I'm not sure if you guys have this record.
Years ago, it was a two-family. Years and years ago, it was a two-family, but it was condemned, so it reverts back to the original, as you well know.
Correct.
Let's go to the parking a little bit. I measured the lot over there. I mean, Rajanaw, I live over that way, so I'm going to be... I mean, Raj and I, I live over that way, so I'm going to be very clear in saying that. I stopped today, I measured the paved lot that Raj just repaved. It's 13 feet deep, from the right-of-way alley to the end of the property line. He's right on the property line. As you know, nine by 18 is a required spot. So even angle them, they're nine by 13. So somewhere, them cars aren't going to fit, as Ms. Newcomb said. He was given that lot back when he came before the board twice, as he said, on the condition of getting additional parking. He purchased him lots, but the parking isn't sufficient. It's not big enough to put the cars in there. So what happens is they overhang either into the right-of-way, or they push the bumper blocks and hang onto the next property. Since we opened the parking lot back up to parking for this one, I feel if we do go for it, this is going to require a buffer zone. And if we put a buffer zone in there, which is required, he doesn't have to park in there. I mean, at that point, now you're way down. You're down to eight or nine feet.
Right. Do you have a plan to resolve the parking issue, if you were to get the variance?
Yeah, if I have to purchase another lot right there, I'll purchase the two more lots, if that is available from SRD, I'm willing to do that.
Well, I know on the side, up by the Orchard Street side, them three are purchased already. I can't speak for down the other end. I don't know, but when you get down far down the other end, now we're gone beyond the 200 feet from the property. So then parking spots cannot be called into play for 305. So, I mean, the hamstring that he has is the parking there.
I mean, Roger, I would, I mean, I would maybe get it surveyed, get those lots surveyed, and come back with the parking plan, so we can see exactly what's going on there with these lots, and how many spots we really have there. Because...
I mean, I'm looking at it, and each of the lots is 80 feet in length, so you need 18 per car. You're talking four spots on each of the two lots, a maximum of eight.
He needs 21, doesn't he?
Well, he needs seven and a half just for the store and apartment at 301-303. So he really doesn't have anything extra for the apartment building.
I have one parking on each side, on 301 side on the back of the building, one on the back of the 305. So I'm only looking to extra one-and-a-half parking spot typically. That's all I'm looking for. And from these lots, this is all I need to borrow it to offset, to have a two-unit.
Now, you also have measured here, 16 by 80 will give you five parking spots each?
Yes. It should easily five parking spot. I mean, I'm not asking more.
No. You're saying that...
It's not going to rank it. Not enough footage for five.
Okay, I'll have it, you know, either, if there is another lot available, I'll be able to purchase it and put it in a place that would actually, you know, satisfy it. And I guess that's all I could do. I mean, if that's what you guys want me to do.
Well, let's look at, let's keep going beyond the parking right now. Let's look at the square footage.
Sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Are you looking to buy another lot in that particular back?
If I have to purchase a lot from SRD to satisfy my call, I'm willing to do so.
Well, because, yes, I drove through yesterday, and I went through, and you can't go straight through, because there's a house there, so you have to either back up or turn around. I got stuck in that parking lot yesterday, so, and it was, because it was full.
It's one-way. That entire alley is actually part of my ownership.
No.
Alley itself. 16 by 80, you know, that's part of the ownership. Nobody uses that alley itself.
I'm going to disagree with you. That alley that's behind your properties, in between that parking lot, is a right-of-way that the owners gave up back in 1931, so the refuse truck could get down there. That's not owned by anybody anymore.
It goes into this measurement.
Well, I'm telling you...
You may say this, but obviously, I'm paying taxes for that property.
Well, it's no different, either property up in the block of Webster that gave up a right-of-way as well, and I'm paying taxes out to that middle line as well.
It was surveyed, that that part is part of my ownership, and I'm paying taxes on it.
Okay.
Okay? It was surveyed, yes.
Oh, do you have the survey?
Not, yeah, I don't have it right now.
So just, I don't want to argue with you. I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm just making sure we're clear. So what you're saying, then, is every resident from 307 down, I'm not sure if you own 307, I forget where you cut off, Raj. So every resident going down towards River Street could block that alley off, then, because they own it, just like you own it, you're saying. So you could shut that alley down.
I could.
They could shut the alley down.
Well, if you owned the alley?
He doesn't own the alley.
Three-quarter. Between those two houses, no.
Okay. But I'm saying, so that gives every resident along Piston Avenue, and the last house down on River Street, the right to say, I'm taking my three feet back, and shut that alley down. So it cuts your access altogether, then. I'm just trying to help you avoid a problem here.
That's just a hypothetical.
So what you're saying is it's going to be a land block?
Technically, if everyone tried to.
If that's going to be land block? I mean, it should be a true way.
But you're saying you own it, so it's not a true way?
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. I still have to keep the way to, you know, more traffic flow.
I think what he's trying to say is it's in his deed, but it's subject to everybody's right to drive up and down that alley.
Correct. It was a right-of-way given up.
It's right-of-way, so I have to keep it open.
Right. So what I'm saying is, so your cars can't overhang in it, then? By your own testimony?
You can back up and go straight out.
Sure you can. And I don't disagree with that. I'm concerned about the depth of your parking spots right now aren't long enough. You need to have 18 feet deep, and you don't have it.
And you can't back up and go straight back out the alley, because it's too many blind spots. I couldn't even get in the alley, let alone out. I almost got stuck in there. The only way out is either back the way you came, or through the lot, back out, Ham Court. Those are the only two ways out of that lot.
I usually go straight through it.
Dan, you're saying there's seven and a half spots with what you see there, correct?
No, I'm seeing eight spots in the two lots on O'Connor Place.
And what about the two single?
He's telling us that he has one more to the rear of 301, and one more to the rear of 305.
And there is, there is, there is single spots there.
Okay, so that would make 10. And his requirement is 10 and a half, so...
So he's short a half a spot?
He's short half a spot.
Okay. So we got the parking straightened out. You want to go on to the size of the apartments?
Square footage of the house, yeah.
Okay.
So according to your numbers, attorney, it comes out to roughly 936 square feet for the house? If I'm looking at it right?
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm not great at math, and I don't have my calculator. Okay.
I cheated. 936, I had to double-check.
Okay.
Raj, right now, is there a kitchen upstairs in the second floor?
I am, yes, there is kitchen on the second floor. Downstairs kitchen, I eliminated because I was required to do so.
So there's no kitchen on the first floor, where you have a tenant right now? But there's a kitchen on the second floor?
Kitchen on the second floor.
Because it's a single, right? You converted it back to the single?
I had to make it a single family.
So, I mean, is your intention to put a kitchen on the first floor now, or? Okay. Is there a bathroom upstairs and a bathroom downstairs?
Yes.
So Dan, we're looking at enough square footage?
If each floor is 936 square feet, then he's okay. Because he needs 600 square feet for each floor.
I know you have an egress out of the back of the building. Is there any entrance or exit in the front of the building?
Yes. There's two entrances in the front, from downstairs and upstairs, and the rear is the same way, downstairs and upstairs.
I see the rear, but the front door is a single front door?
Yeah.
So there's a hallway that takes you upstairs?
Yeah.
Is anybody here to give testimony in this case? Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths to help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Kathleen Madzen, 102 Watcher Drive, Scranton, PA, 18505.
Thank you.
The attorney, your attorney, you can sit if you need to ask her questions and use that microphone.
I'm here on behalf of the South Scranton Neighborhood Association.
Sorry, you're the president, right?
Vice president.
Vice president, okay.
We have a couple of concerns with adding extra housing in that block. That block is very overcrowded. The house he's talking about is a row house. I believe there's maybe eight of them on the whole block there. There's a corner market that he has right on the corner that's been extremely busy. Parking has been a constant issue there. As a neighborhood association, we've been trying to work with the city and with PennDOT to get some kind of traffic control on that corner, because the amount of accidents happening are large. So adding another family into the mix, and a lot of the residents that are in those homes have children, they cross over to Orchard Street to the park, so it's really a dangerous area, and if you're going to add more cars and more families, you're really going to have more congestion. In addition, I'm not sure how they access the back parking lots, but the small, little court, or O'Connor Place, or whatever that one is, that runs parallel to the backs of these houses, really isn't paved or anything. That's just like a grassy little entranceway, so you're going to add more cars going in and out there. I'm not sure that's feasible. Also, splitting up single-family homes is really not great for our neighborhood. I mean, we already have apartments, we already have doubles, we do have some vacancies, so the need for a double there isn't quite needed, which leads me to one question, when you were talking about size of apartments. In order to have an actual bedroom, since that's the middle row house, can you have bedrooms in the middle of homes that have no windows? Like, is that part of a rule? I'm not sure. I'm just, it just came up to me as I was sitting here. And you did already talk about the bedrooms and the bathrooms and the kitchens, and I guess there's enough to split that into two families. We did see that there was space for meters in the back, but we weren't sure if the meters or the new things were put in, in expectation that a meter is going to be, this was going to be approved, and a meter had to go in, or if those were already removed by the PP&amp;L company prior to his purchase. And also, we have questions regarding safety. As Bob stated, there are exits in the back of the house, but there is only one front door. Also, the conditions of those homes, in my opinion, are subpar. There's stucco cracking, there's screens torn, doors don't always shut. The house that was attached to the store had a shooting. There's holes in the side of the building from bullets. The family that was in there has been evicted. The front door of the store was smashed in, and it was robbed, and it was covered with cardboard, basically, for a good amount of time, as opposed to the glass being replaced. So as neighbors, that's a corridor right into South Side. That's one of the main roads for people that are coming into our neighborhood, and we really like to see properties kept up and kept better. The parking is in question. There's absolutely no parking on the street there. I mean, it's packed. The light of sight, or the line of sight, when you're coming out of Orchard Street to look on Piston Avenue towards Hickory and down that way towards, like, Menucha Way, is, it's not good. You can't see, even if the cars are parked legally and the signs have been set back, it's still very difficult. So you add in more cars and more traffic, it's going to become more dangerous. And we're also very concerned that if you grant the variance to this building, he owns several other of those row houses, how many of them, then, would you have to grant again because of precedence being set? So if one becomes a double, will all three of them become a double? Will all six of them become a double? Those are concerns that we have, because we just want to make sure our neighbors are being safe, that they have safe housing, and that it's appropriate housing. And that's it.
Thank you. Attorney, do you have any questions?
Just make sure, sorry, just make sure you press the green button so the lights on the microphone.
Oh, thank you. Are you aware that this house was previously a multi-dwelling?
No, I'm not, until tonight, but I'm not sure when that was. I just Googled, I looked at the assessor's site, and it says, "single dwelling."
Okay, well, that's how it is currently, after it was condemned.
Right. But I am aware that when it is condemned or vacant over a certain amount of time, just by sitting, listening to these folks, that it reverts back.
Right, correct. Well, my point is, I'm just asking if previously, when it was a multi-dwelling, were you aware of any issues?
I don't really know when it was a multi-dwelling last.
Okay. Now, you also talked about the line of sight on the street. That, to me, kind of sounds more of like a roadway, or the road crew fixing, like, stop signs, or, I'm not sure what you're alleging. Are you alleging that if you were to have another home?
I'm alleging if there was more cars and more people, it will be a detriment.
Okay, so, like, two more people, for instance, and another car or two, you think would be that severe?
I think any more than what is there, because it's already a detriment now, that we have accidents occur more at that intersection than on several other intersections heading down Piston Avenue. So when you add more parking and more traffic, as when we came against the variance for the store, we said these were problems existing, and now that added on to it, and now we have more going to be added on, I just think it is inappropriate. And what is working there now is working as it is. Why risk even more harm?
Okay, and have you contacted, like, law enforcement or anything about the issues?
Yes.
Have they said that they were going to do anything differently? Is there some sort of...
The city is working with PennDOT. PennDOT doesn't want to pay the $300,000, or whatever it is, to put in a light. The city is trying to figure things out. City council persons are working on behalf of the neighborhood to try and figure something out. So yes, this has been in the works for a safer intersection for a little while.
Okay. Do you mind if he asks questions? Okay.
My question to her is, when is the last time you ever having issues about the corner house, and you made a comment about it? This gentleman, he knows me for all these years. I'm always available to, you know, get any comments. I found out the situation you mentioned about the bullet and whatnot. I have, this building has been vacant for over a month now. It will not be rented until it is completely brought up to the current code. I'm waiting for the city to issue me a permit
Okay.
Before I do anything else. Okay, as far as owning, how many buildings I own on that side? Several. I'm going to buy more.
Okay.
But the problem is this, is this city, with these neighbors, they don't like change. They also don't want to accept the fact that if anybody wants to invest thousands of dollars in their neighborhood, they have nothing...
I can interrupt you. I can interrupt you.
You know, it should not be.
I have an interest in that neighborhood, and you're wrong. You're 100% wrong to make that statement.
But I was never approached by any neighborhood...
These people are not here to defend themselves, what you're saying. So, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to hear that testimony, that the neighbors don't take care of the neighborhood, or don't want any improvement in the neighborhood, or his store wouldn't be there.
I was never informed that you had this issue. I found out when the cops told me. Since then, I took action to vacate that building. The key is this, is certain things, if you guys had a neighborhood, and how come neighborhoods do not actually contact the person who owns the property, say, hey, this is what's going on? I was never approached by neighborhoods.
Stop, all right? Because you dragged me into the testimony, so now I'm going to testimony with this. I approached you numerous times about that, that house there. I went to your store...
In the past six months, no.
A year ago, I approached you.
I think you should not be even sitting in this chair at this time, when I have this.
Okay.
It's a conflict of interest, you know that?
I'm going to recuse myself.
No, it's true. Anytime anybody has a conflict of interest, you should not be in this chair. Last time, the person had a conflict of interest, he stepped up and walked away.
I just recused myself. I'm going to recuse myself in the vote. I'll step down to that side. Did you have any more questions for this woman here?
So, your neighborhood never tried to approach me in any way. I'm a local resident, a local available all the time to make things happen, try to be communicated with every people I possibly can. And all I have done is what's allowed by law, and all I wanted to do is pay the bills, be able to survive, to improve the property and the condition of it. Especially the traffic and whatnot, it was already there over the years period of time. So I just disagree with every input she has about my properties being issued. Most of the time, I drive through their Piston Avenue. I own 301, 303, 305, 307. There's, there's no parked car park there. Never, I don't see much. I go through a lot more than she thinks I do.
Sir, if I may ask, do you know who I am and where my business is located?
No, ma'am.
I have Madsen Insurance Group, and it's right across the street from your store.
Okay.
At 231 Pittston Avenue.
Okay.
So I do go into the grocery store that you have. I utilize it. I work there in my office probably till at least six, seven, sometimes eight or later. I've been there probably at least five years. We rent that space. We don't own it. We rent it. So my husband parks on Orchard Street across from your store. I park on Pittston Avenue in front of, uh, 231 Pittston, up a little bit, so that we have room for a customer if they need to stop by. So we use that corner daily. There are cars parked there. A buil, a car hit our building at that intersection twice, two times, since a year ago September. We had to have the building resided. I'm just letting him know that I'm very familiar with his space, that I'm not just a person in the neighborhood group. I am right there. I have no problem with developing our neighborhood. I like when there's good, um, development, new thoughts, progressive actions. What I really protect against is, uh, places that don't belong in the setting that they wanna be put. That's why we have zoning rules, and that's why there's zoning variances. So when you do ask for a variance, that means you're kind of bending the rule to fit your need versus buying a double that's already in existence and just making it a double. So when you purchase, 'cause you have so many properties, you are familiar that once it has been condemned, it reverts back. So you're familiar with that. So all we do is try to protect the rules that are already on the book. We're not here to argue with folks or condemn you for trying to do better, because everyone wants to do better, and we would love for our neighborhood to succeed. Right now, I think it's a great neighborhood. I think we have wonderful neighbors, we have great landlords, we have great tenants, we have great homeowners. We just wanna try and protect that, and by doing so, we have to kind of follow the rules that are here.
Mrs. Madsen, did you, you, that entire block, the outside of 300 block of Pitts, they're all row houses. There's about 16 of them altogether. So my, my, I, my sister lives in Philly, or lived in Philly, and she lived in a row house. I don't know, I don't know, maybe you could explain to me, how you make a row house into a, a double? I mean, there's, there really, there's only certain places you can put bedrooms, 'cause the windows are only in certain locations. Some row houses are longer than the other, so windows, you know, and, and how many more do you plan on buying? You said you wanted to buy some more. Are you talking about that same block?
I, well, that's, that's not what we're here for.
I know that, but row houses, I, I, I'm just saying, row houses are not, are meant to be single-family.
The intention, I believe, is to just revert it back to what it was previously.
And he wants to make it, he wants to turn it into a two-unit.
It was going to be only, it's only gonna be one bedroom each when it gets done, upstairs and downstairs, because I don't want it to have it, you know, like have it two bedroom and a bedroom without window, no. Just gonna be one bedroom each upstairs, downstairs, very spacious, and that's it. So the cars, amount of cars and amount of people is still gonna be the same.
This is why, this is why we asked you to bring pictures, so we can see the windows and what the inside looks like and what it's gonna look like, 'cause it just, it just, it just makes it hard for us without a picture.
It's going to be only one bedroom each, that's, it's not gonna take much space at all. So the idea is like, we're not gonna have more cars. Technically, it will be the same amount of cars if you have a four-bedroom versus two-bedroom, one bedroom each.
I think we get the idea. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, that's it.
Okay. Anyone else wanna give testimony in this case? Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths to help you, God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Bill Stevens, 306 Pittston.
Thank you.
I'm concerned about, uh, this unit being doubled up. It's not a matter of how many more people fit in there. There's already too many people in there now. Unfortunately, this hasn't stopped, you know, a while ago. I've lived there for 40 years. We have African neighbors, we have Syrian neighbors, we have Latin neighbors. They all get along. They all help each other shovel sidewalks. That's not the case. You can't play the violin here. I have trouble parking my car on Pittston Avenue. Both of my vehicles were hit twice, both, two vehicles were hit in less than 18 months. We have to park around corners and everything else. The parking lot that we're talking about for this apartment is in disarray. Ms. Newcomb, she saw the, the maintenance of that parking lot, right? Now, do you think, if you rented that apartment, that's where you were gonna park? You'd rather park out on the street, right? Because it's more convenient. So that parking lot's gonna be empty. Like, you could say, this guy could have all the parking he wants back there. Nobody's gonna park there the way it is right now. And it's gonna come out on the street. Now, I have two vehicles because I, I just retired, but I worked, and my wife worked, so that's two. And I have 40 feet.
Where did you say, sorry, where did you say your address was?
306.
Oh, so you're across the street, okay.
Yes. So now, when you double up this apartment, are they gonna have one car or are they gonna have two cars? So now, you're not looking for a parking space at half. You're liable to be looking for three, right? If the people who rent it have two cars. So this started a while ago, and it's kind of got overflowed. And so somewhere, there has to be a stop to it. And like Mrs. Newcomb said, is two, gonna be two at 305 and two more at 307, 309, and whatever? Like, it's not the people, it's not their, their ethnicity or anything else. There's just, it's just too crowded there. With the store, the parking spaces for the, the customers, they're taking up, there's a, there's a setback from the intersections what they can't use. There's just not enough parking. There's just not enough parking. Now, the, the square footage that, uh, is required for an apartment is what?
600.
Pardon? 600. Okay, so you got nine, right? Okay. But I mean, that's my concern, and I'm totally against it. Sorry, but that's the way it is.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wanna speak? Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths to help you, God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Joe Dombrowski, 330 Pittston Avenue. Uh, I have no objection to open it up as a single unit as it, as it was developed, as a row house. I agree with the neighbors that the parking lot in the back is just a Band-Aid. Uh, it's, it's a, it's a, a paved, uh, lot, and the rest of it's surrounded by dirt. There's no setbacks, there's no, uh, other requirements. Uh, to access that lot, you either have to come off of Ham Court or the right-of-way between the, uh, the apartments. Uh, from what I understand, and I think another neighbor's gonna testify that, the lot is not maintained in the winter, so people are forced to park on the Pittston Avenue when the, when the snow is, is there. And as you know, we get a lot of snow in this area, so I just, uh, agree with the rest of the neighbors. I, I think it's a bad idea as a double, as a single as it was intended for. I have no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths to help you, God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Tom Godfrey, 329 Pittston Avenue.
Thank you.
G-O-D-F-R-E-Y. Uh, like I say, I live at 329 Pittston Avenue. Now, a little while back, you guys granted, uh, variances or whatever for the Nabaski's Dry Cleaning Building, okay? And one of his, uh, bolsters was that Mr. Hopple was going to put parking in the back, and that Mr. Rog, Roger here, I, I call him Roger, I don't know his last name, uh, that he gave him permission that he was gonna lease that part of the lot to Mr. Hopple. Now, I don't know what that is, but that's what he told you. And for one thing, that place back there is dark at night. Even at the end by River Street and at the end by Orchard Street, they're both pitch black. I mean, I've seen people hiding in that back alley right behind my house. And i- in the winter, if there's a snowstorm, nobody's gonna wanna park back in the, in the lot because it doesn't get plowed, so they're all gonna park out on the street, 'cause that's what they do every year. That's what they do now. So there is no room, there is no parking for extra cars, even if it's only two. There's just no room. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Dan, do you remember if we, uh, I don't remember if that was part of the approval process for that dry cleaning. Was there a lease for that?
I honestly don't remember.
Roger, did you lease that to him or? Did you lease some of that, that property back there to them?
No, I have a sign over there, nobody's allowed to park there.
I would just like to say before, before you make your decision, I think a lot of the issue stems from, you know, the parking itself. I don't believe that it's gonna be a detriment from making this single-family unit into a multi-dwelling unit. He said himself, it's going to be one bedroom on the top, one bedroom on the bottom. It's really not going to make much of a difference. Initially, before it was condemned, and I believe 2011, it was a multifamily dwelling. So I think that, you know, there might be an issue that needed to take up with the city as opposed to with just this one house being turned into a multi-dwelling. I, I believe my client said he was willing to, um, fix the parking lot to, you know, come to whatever, you know, the board requested to make it suitable for the cars to park there.
Okay.
Need a motion?
Make a motion?
Second.
Motion second.
Mr. Morris?
No.
Mr. Morris?
No.
Ms. Newcomb?
No.
Mr. Ross?
No. Vote for Naziri, you've been denied. I, I believe he's on to the next case, Stuart.
Yeah, we're all good.
Chair, who, uh, L C C's variance to a private property, two-unit apartment building, 424 South Webster Avenue, R1A zone.
I don't think he, this guy had a lot, so he's just not there.
For the 424? Do you have the drawing, um, those which are submitted for the 424? Yes, and they all have it as well. Okay. Did I just introduce ourselves again or?
No, 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 you can just, you could just.
Consider yourself sworn.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, Mr. Shaw, why are you asking for a variance for, um, the property at 424 South Webster?
424 South Webster, uh, was on, uh, tax sale in 2018, and, uh, that property was huge, the size of the lot and the building was huge. So I, I took it on board, and, uh, it's been, uh, it, I spent, uh, first about, almost like $8,000 to $10,000 to put a brand-new roof on it, just to cover it because there was a roof leak on it. Once it's fixed, after that, I went to the city, applied for windows and doors to close it up. Unfortunately, I was denied for all the permits I requested, just to button the building up. And then I was going to submit the prints to bring it in for a two-family. So there was a shed in the back of the building. I, you know, removed all the debris from entire property. It's all cleaned up, and I need to do some work. I requested repeatedly to give me a permit so we can fix it. So I was told to go to the zoning board and bring the plans. So I have a prints, submitted that, and, uh, it's a two-family, it used to be two-family over the years, but since it was condemned, normally the rule is goes to the single family until I provide proper documents, if it's possible, to be converted to two-family. The size of a lot is a 40 by 160, I believe so. Right there. What, this is, this is Webster. 40 by 145. Uh, there is a huge amount of parking space in the back of it. I also have a drawing for that to submit it.
I think it's attached to the application.
Easy with that, okay.
You have copies of it?
Yeah, they have them.
We have those.
You have, okay, yeah. So all I wanted to do is get the work, it's been one year, I've been waiting to get the work started. Unfortunately, I have not allowed to do so, so I wanted to get started somewhere.
You, you have a lot of work in that back.
Pardon me?
You have a lot of work to do in that back.
I, I cleaned it up, everything, removed all of the breeze from it.
Well, right now, there's a dumpster back there, so.
Yes, as a matter of fact, what's happening is when I clean it up, after that, people are throwing garbage on the property.
Well, I'm, I don't, I didn't look in the dumpster, I just saw the dumpster, but.
I took some pictures and everything, then I, I figured I'm gonna be, you know, like blamed for it.
There's a wall there, yeah.
So what I did is I put another brand-new dumpster in it. I wanted to, you know, so we remove all the debris from it again, and, uh, the guy's doing a brand-new roof from next-door neighbor, they're throwing all this debris on my lot. So like, it, it's a nuisance, but what am I gonna say? It's a part of the life, so.
Getting back to this variance, um, would you say that the unique physical circumstance is the fact that, again, this one was a multi-dwelling unit until it was condemned?
Yeah, it was, it was a multi-dwelling unit over the years. It's in assessment record, I have, uh, documents on that, and, uh, there's like lots of room, like each floor, even if I make it, like there is three-floor, this, this building.
Now, are there separate meters currently in that building?
It has, uh, two gas meters and two electric meters under this premises.
Okay. Um, and if you have to convert this one back to a single-family dwelling, would that cause any hardship on you?
It's all gonna be like, I will have, make it like seven or eight bedrooms house.
Okay.
It's gonna be like too many people, and nine out of 10, what's happening in the city of Scranton, whenever I rent out anything over a four-bedroom, two families lives together. And, uh, it's just like, uh, too, too much, uh, wear and tear in a building. Like, there's nine, 10, 11, 12 people living in the same house.
Now, is this, this variance itself, would that be necessary to enable you to reasonably use your property?
It would utilize properly and for me to control it better in order for me to get this property into this real, uh, I guess, form to the current condition. Right now, it's completely gutted.
And you didn't create this hardship?
No, no.
Okay. If this variance were granted, would it alter the essential character of the neighborhood there?
Yes, there should be no problem with.
So it wouldn't alter the characteristic of the neighborhood? It would fit right in?
It will, it would truly fit in, and you know, like, there's a very active alley, enough parking in the back of it. I would rather have one extra parking for my tenants, and all that way, they have a peace of mind.
Okay. And would it, if the variance were granted, would it cause a detriment to the public welfare at all?
No.
Okay. Um, and you said you do have plans for parking here?
Yes.
There's plenty of parking?
There's more than enough parking.
Okay. Um, and if this variance were granted, would it represent the minimum variance that would afford relief to you?
Yes.
I have no further questions.
So your plan shows four park, four off-street parking spaces, access from Hertz Court, is that right?
Pardon me?
Four spaces accessing from Hertz Court?
Yeah, we put four spaces for right now. If we need more, we could do it more, but it's gonna, there's, there's plenty of room in there.
Yeah, technically, you only need three, but you have four.
Yeah, there used to be a swimming pool when I got it. There was like a huge swimming pool in there, and there was a shed in there. So like, we gutted the whole thing. Now, the next step is, after I get the permit, I have to level the lot and do that work. I cannot do anything until I'm allowed to do so.
Is that, is that 40 feet wide? 'Cause it says zero, zero, but up at the top it says 40 feet wide, so.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Park lot 40 feet by?
150. Yeah, it's, it's 40 by 150. It's shown on here.
Yeah, I just, it's, I, yeah. You okay?
So Dan, that's the parking behind?
That's the parking behind.
Where it's all hill? It's all hill going up to the house.
That's why he said, that's why he said he has to level it.
Yeah, he did say that he would have to level it, but he needs a building permit in order to do so.
That's not in the cost of the permit to pull for it, all right?
Pardon me?
He didn't get any permits yet. He didn't get permits yet.
I have to get permit in order to do something.
And you'd have that paved, that parking pad area paved?
If it's required for me to pave it.
It is, I'm just saying.
No problem, yeah, yeah, no problem. And this one, I have enough room to work with.
I was wondering if there's a permit to back out.
So on our drawing, we have, you know, it's a 40-wide lot, and it seems like you have the spots parallel. Is there a buffer, or are they right on the property line?
Oh, the parking?
Yeah.
I don't have the document, I just gave all the copies to you guys.
This is the one we have.
Right now, he-
Oh, no, I have another one, can you look at another one?
It does not show a buffer, but there is room for the buffer.
Right here.
What are we supposed to be there, Dan?
So we could, we could require that he put the buffer in.
I actually have a certain document for that. I actually just made a discussion with you. There's, there's plenty of room here.
Okay, okay, that answers that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So you're saying, Dan, with the 20 feet-
If he moved the parking away from the next-door neighbor by an eight-foot buffer or a six-foot buffer, as the case may be, he would still have an access way of anywhere from 12 to 14 feet, which is enough of an aisle to access.
Is it, I mean, Roger, is there a reason why you want the parking lot this and not just, I mean, you need three spots, you can, you can put three spots without going into all this?
Yeah, yeah. I could do three spots or four spots, whatever needs it.
Right, Dan, he doesn't need that.
If I, my goal is this, if I'm doing a three, I might just do one more to give a benefit of doubt to them for their access to it. And like, I need to go as close as to the property, so this way, it's easier access to them, to the house.
It's always better to get more cars off the street. So he's got, he's got room for four, which he does have room for.
So what does the buffer require, Dan?
Eight feet.
How many, three feet?
Eight.
Eight feet?
Yeah, so you still have 32 feet left, 18 for the car and 14 for the aisle.
No, is there more to back out?
More than enough, it's, it's an alley, it's a 14-foot alley, which is bigger than most parking lots.
Oh, you said you'd be, I'd go back on the alley?
No, no. You pull in, and you back out of the front, and-
So you're backing into the alley?
I have dumpster guy-
That's what I always wanted to know, Dan, like, are you backing?
Backing into the yard and pulling out.
That's what I wanted to know, if there was enough space.
Okay. A dumpster guy comes in there, no problem.
Is there anybody else that wants to give testimony in this case? Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to testimony, you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths to help you, God?
Yes, sir.
Name and address.
Thomas Patterson, 527 South Irving Avenue, Scranton, and the president of the Southside Neighborhood Association. I've been watching this house for a while now, and we're gonna go back to the issue with the parking, because that 400 block of South Webster, you go by there at 5, 6 o'clock, there's no room to park.
He has enough off-street parking.
I understand that, but my problem is, what if they're gonna park up on the street instead of down in the parking?
Well, we can't control that.
Exactly, that's it, and it's, it's just not right, because then everybody's gonna get a parking in their backyards, which, you know, it gets ugly after a while, going through the neighborhoods all the time and seeing it. And they're supposed to complete it, and I go through the neighborhood like daily, and my problem is, they get the permits for the parking area, and they don't finish it, and it's just gravel or dirt, and they're getting away with it.
Did you call?
Yes.
And they don't do anything?
Nothing.
Gotta keep on it. Was this house condemned, just?
Yeah, it's definitely- Yes, it was.
You didn't go see it, or?
I did see it, I just didn't see a sticker from the window. But I came from the other side, and I just went around the back.
How long ago was that condemned?
What?
How long ago was that house condemned?
I don't have that information.
Because I don't know if it reverts back to a single or?
Here today.
Okay. I think you should just keep it a single. Thank you, thank you.
You raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to testimony, you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths to help you, God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Dr. George William Shea IV, 425 South Webster Avenue.
Okay, may proceed.
Yeah, so I live right across the street from this property in question, and when I first moved in, I think it was 2016, a single-family lived there, so this has been occupied by a single-family for, I think, almost 30 years, something like that, 20 years. I think we have a rental directly next to him, there's a rental property, sorry, a rental property, property directly next to me, there's one on the corner, there's one in the back alley, and I think there's another one. So there's almost five rental properties, right, with multi-units in just about 14 houses. So I don't think the, we need the addition of another multi-unit dwelling there. And I was looking on the Census Bureau, looking at data, and from what I can see, as you increase the number of rental properties in an area, you're talking about losing home value up to like 14 percent, and the increase of crime, where I heard about him losing sort of detrimental cost here, but this comes to a cost to our property value as well. I think we know at this area of the south side, the houses aren't worth very much. I think we saw in the recession, right, I mean, the housing values were hit extremely hard, we're just starting to see this go up, I think maybe in the past three years, maybe 10 percent. So I think we'd be looking at losing our property values, again, if we were to have this, on this particular block, right, with the percentage of rentals.
I could not see you wanting to keep it in the condition that it's in, though, right?
No, absolutely not, and it's nice that it's-
I mean, it's pretty bad.
It's in bad shape, but it would have been condemned like some of the other, sorry, the blight would have been knocked down like some of the other properties in the immediate area. So having the rental, I do think, is a problem.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roger, just so you understand, before we vote, you're gonna require an eight-foot buffer on the one side of that parking, so you're gonna have to, and Dan, if it does get approved, we're gonna require paving back there.
Yes.
Then you'd agree that you would level it out, pay it, and do whatever was necessary?
Has to go. It's an eight-foot buffer with the four spots being paved.
Correct.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Ms. Newcom?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes, vote of four to zero, you've been approved, good luck. Prove the neighbors wrong, Roger.
Still working, my friend. Please, could you give me about another thing?
You call the next case, please?
Yuri Abdurraqmanov, Agent for Elena Florova, seeks special exception pursuant to Section 806 E3 to reuse the structure at 1021 Richmond Street as a three-unit apartment building, R1A zone.
Hello?
May I raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear to testimony, you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths to help you, God?
I do.
Name and address?
Address my, or address what about this building?
Where you live right now.
Where do you live?
I live 88 Leibert Road, Wurzburg, New York, 12790.
Did you get that? Okay, okay, sir, thank you.
Yeah.
Did you spell, did you get his name?
Yeah, it's on the paper.
Oh, you got the paper, yeah, that's, that's-
I responsible, I'm so sorry for my English.
Did you say Wurzburg?
I'm artist in-
She's got it.
Yeah.
No, 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 I was asking for myself.
Yeah, my sister, Elena Florova, she bought unbelievable house in 2002, 1021 Richmond Street, Scranton, this castle house. This house built, architect who built this building, 1900, unbelievable house, and she bought this house in 2002, looks three-family house, because after he die, the people who bought this house, they replace for three-family house. She's so famous artist in Russia, in America too, many magazines about her, she's number one artist. But when she left to Russia, she had problem with her husband, with heart, and they supposed to do operation, she left to Russia, and she cannot come back, she come back couple times, she start replace this house, she bought brand-new, brand-new windows, she bought floors, unbelievable, I have all pictures inside, she replace inside the house, she truck put new electricity, because this house 1900, everything brand-new.
You could bring the pictures up, we'll take a peek at them.
Yeah, can I show you?
Yeah, absolutely.
everything, and I will help her repair this house outside.
You gotta go back to the microphone to speak.
And after, last time she come in 2016, and after, she cannot come because she feel something bad, and we will, I have power attorney, general power attorney, who sell this house, and I will ask permission, put back this house for three-family, for three-family, because everything finish inside only dividers, divider, every floor, this, for two, for three-family house. With this, I ask, because one family, you know, this is so big house, and nobody can buy for nothing, this house, she spend so much money, and-
Are you telling us right now it's set up as a three-family?
She bought three-family, and she, when you, it here, can, a big driveway, maybe for nine car, and three meter boxes.
Are you have copy, original copy for the list to doubt, Mr. Dallas?
The pictures?
Yeah, we have.
So how many, how many units are in there now?
How many units, this three-floor?
How many apartments, are there apartments in there now, or is it still a single house?
Still a single house, but we suppose close only each floor with doors, because everything inside suppose finish, we not finish, this not finish.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is this house currently condemned?
I'm sorry?
Is this house condemned?
What is condemned?
Dan, do you know if it's condemned?
We don't know.
It's condemned, I mean, the one story.
Okay. I'm pretty sure it went before the Housing Appeals Board, and they, I know they took it off the demolition list, but that's as far as-
It's tempered.
I know that, I know that. Wait till you come up to testify, okay? But it was removed, I think pending, gave him so much time again to try to do something with the house, if I'm correct, and one of the contingencies, getting zoning approved for whatever he's looking for here.
I guess, I mean, I think we're all familiar with this house, it's got a lot of news coverage at this point. Is the intent for this to be three units, to make it more marketable to sell, or is someone planning on holding it and being active as a landlord?
My, my, our relative will buy this house and leave in first floor, and second and third floor, he will give for rent.
Who did you say was gonna do this?
My relative will buy this house.
He wants to buy it.
He wants to buy the house, he want, because he don't need this big house, he want, he want live in first floor, second and third floor, he will give for rent, family, not student, something like that.
So you have like an agreement to sell this if you get it approved for three units?
Yes, yes, sure, he asked me, because he cannot buy for big house for one unit, have We already, she already had, because she will buy for herself, we have all driven for this house for looks one-family, replace from three-family, but right now, we will do it this way. He ask you, give permission, change zoning for three-family for this house.
Is there anybody in the audience that wants to give testimony on this case? We'll let some people speak. You raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to testimony, you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths to help you, God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Andrea Beatrice, 1012 Richmond Street. We have some issues about it turning into a three-unit. I believe when it was first built, it was a one-unit, I think it's in the Historical Society. When they did buy it, that was back in, I think he said, 2002, she went in and I believe she gutted the whole house, down to the studs, for the hopes of an art studio, and found out she couldn't have a zoning for the business on Richmond Street, she left the property, and that was the end of it. So through the years, there hasn't been anybody watching over this property, I'm sure you've seen it on the news, the grass is crazy, the trees fall down, there's been looting and broken windows, this gorgeous house has just been sitting, rotting. Every time the grass is up to here, everybody, I think they've come to you to get someone to take care of it. So my concern is, who's watching over it, who's gonna watch over it, and I, three-unit, there's not even a parking lot, it's actually a drive roundabout.
I think what the gentleman said, I don't know if you heard, I guess the realtor that has this property wants to buy the property if he gets approved for a three-unit, so he would not own it anymore, they would not own it.
The realtor for three-unit.
He wants to live, the realtor wants to live on the first floor, this is what he's telling us.
Yeah, it says for sale by owner, so I was unaware of that. So I knew that him and his sister were owners. I, after it's condemned, I thought it goes back to a one, I don't know, I think-
It does.
These are, these are people signing that they don't want a three-unit rental in our residential area for parking and for whatever could occur. For parking and for whatever could occur.
Dan, could we take this or?
Any objections, sir? There's nobody objecting, so we could take.
So I mean, you said you live by this property, right? I mean, so you'd wanna see something happen to it, right?
It's a beautiful building. I would hate to see it torn down. Like I said, I have a book from the library about when it was built and the wraparound porch. It was the Historical Society. Gorgeous building, but like I said, I was told it was totally gutted inside.
I mean, from the pictures that we saw, it looked like it was gutted. Some of the sheet rock is up and stuff like that. So I mean, there is, looks like there was a lot of work done. But it seems like it's a very large, large home.
It's massive, it is massive. But I do have concerns about, he's saying a realtor, but it says for sale by owner.
He's the owner and he's selling it to the realtor.
So, yeah, okay, so I just have concerns about a three unit.
That's what I have concerns about.
Yeah, I do.
You can speak if you, you just have to be sworn in.
You raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truths to help you God?
Yes, sir.
Name and address, please.
Robert Franklin, ten twenty Richmond Street, Scranton. I live directly, I actually have two properties directly across the street. And I've lived there since when his sister purchased it. And, you know, I've just seen, she purchased it, it was ripped apart and then it's been sitting that way. And there is no, there is no parking, it's just a roundabout.
Well, I think right now, but they'd have to do some...
Well, you couldn't put a parking lot, if you look at those pictures.
I was there.
Closer to the microphone.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, I was there, you'd have to do a little clearing. I mean, I saw at least, at least three parking spots, minimum.
I measured today, if that roundabout comes out, yeah, there's, there is plenty of parking. You just have to take that out.
Yeah, you're gonna get, was it four and a half spots you would need then? One point five?
For three units, we would need five.
So five, there's not room, there's no way there's room for five spots.
I got five today when I measured, based on their drawing. They actually had about seven in this.
So when you drive up that driveway, there's enough for five spots?
In my opinion, you gotta take that, you gotta take whatever, was it a fountain or a planter? That's gotta come out, but you can do it if you do that.
Okay. That's my only concern is to make it into just having three units and, I mean, that's with, I mean, I don't know if you're allowed to take that petition, but there's, you know. I don't wanna see it tore down, I mean, the house is beautiful, but we're, I'm just opposing.
I think we're all in agreement, nobody wants to see it tore down, but so besides three, what would you look for?
I'd be okay with, you know, two or one, I just don't want, because in three, just being, I'm a contractor in the city and I know if it's three units or more, it's considered, you have to be a commercial general contractor to get a permit. So then it reverts to you have to have a private hauler for garbage.
No, they can, as long as they're willing to pay it, they can pay it, just you and I don't.
I thought it was four units or more.
Yeah, they, because I asked them today up there, we're actually getting a permit and they said three, but maybe they...
It's four or more.
But I know they said, you know, you have to, it's, you know, it's a commercial building if it's, I know it's three units, it's commercial. That I know for sure.
I think it comes into play, like you said, with the general contractors like this.
Yeah. And I know if you want, he was saying it's gonna cost, if you wanna make it three units, then it's gonna be three kitchens. It's actually gonna cost more to turn into a three unit than it is to want to put it back. Because then you're only putting one kitchen, maybe two bathrooms. Otherwise you need three kitchens, three bathrooms. So I mean, he was saying it's gonna cost too much, it's gonna cost more to make it three apartments.
I think he said that there was too big of a house for one person.
Well, I mean, it depends on, I mean, yes, there's houses over North Washington Avenue that are just as big as that. And they're single families, North Washington Avenue.
Does that art studio look better now?
What's that?
Does that art studio from a couple years back look better and better now?
Well, I mean, I didn't...
That's what happens, in all honesty, that's what happens. Sometimes the first deal is the best deal. Because you went from something that the person was probably gonna live in and have an art studio that, sure, probably would've created some little bit of traffic on that street. And I know it's a tight street and everything over there.
Yeah, there's no parking.
Now we're going up to three apartments, they're looking for three apartments to crowd in there.
Yeah, there is, like, right now, there's no...
Oh, I know.
The parking is tough right now.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that street, very familiar with that street.
And the speeding up and down that road is, I mean, they're constantly, police are there trying to, because they just fly. With the Marywood traffic coming down, that's... Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Will you raise your right hand, please?
Sure.
Do you solemnly swear to testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truths to help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Bob McKean, ten eighteen Grandview Street, Scranton, PA.
How far is that from this property?
That's one street over, I believe. It's directly behind it.
I'm, am right behind that house.
Okay.
Ms. McKean, could you spell your last name, please?
M C K, capital K E O N. All right. I've been living, I lived at Grandview Street for twenty years. When I first moved in, my house, that house did have some tenants. All right, so I say in the last fifteen years, there has no, there is no tenants there. Here's my issue. Mr. Yura finally showed up to clean, cut his grass, cut the weeds, which were going over into my property. And I'm not talking just weeds, I'm talking huge amount of weeds. After I decided to contact the Times because I saw it in the paper that it was gonna be demolition, so on and so forth. Like I said, the issue is no upkeep on this property whatsoever. This man finally showed up, I don't know, after two years maybe, never saw him there. He claims to be there, but the grass was this high. And the overgrown weeds came into my property over my fence and my neighbor's fence at next door. He does not maintain the property whatsoever. The back deck is falling down, literally fell apart. It cannot be reused, it has to be torn down and made new. This property is not kept up at all. It's a disgrace. I come out of my property, I put a beautiful deck on and as I look up, it's boarded windows and the deck falling. I have pictures on my phone. I should've made pictures, but I have pictures on my phone. You're very welcome to come out of my property and look at it.
No, I think we are all in agreeance that the property is, is run down.
It's deplorable.
But I mean, do you think if he sold it to a local gentleman that was gonna live in the house and maintain? Obviously, if he's gonna live there, he's gonna wanna maintain it, right? I don't think he has any intentions on staying here.
Well, he's not maintaining the property and not being a good neighbor. So maybe if he maintained the property until it was sold, it's possible, but believe me, that house needs probably two hundred thousand dollars.
Sure, I wouldn't doubt it.
And I don't see anybody, go look in Greenwich. This house is for sale that are up for three years that nobody's buying. Nobody has the money, nobody's gonna invest in this house. It looks fine from Richmond Street, come on Grandview Street, come on my backyard. Look at the border windows, look at the deck that's falling down. He had many times, many years to fix that up. It was neglected. And I don't believe this man is being truthful. If he sells it, good luck. I don't think he's gonna find a buyer. But in the meantime, the property is deplorable and getting worse and worse. And he was promised to come back and clean the rest of it up and he hasn't shown up yet. So I totally disagree, whatever's gonna happen, and I don't think he's gonna sell it, gentlemen. I really don't. Thank you.
Mr. McKean, hold on, yeah, hold on, just, let's just assume he does. He does have a seller and he does fix it up. Are you, do you have, what are your objections to the property if it does get fixed up?
Well, I have no objection, no objections, but I think it's a stall tactic. Because they, he doesn't wanna tear it down because he's gonna have to pay for that. So this is all stall tactic, this has been going on for years. That's all I'm saying. That's my opinion, I don't think he's gonna sell it. And if he does, I'll give you a hundred bucks.
I'm pretty sure that's on a timeline, right? Yes, sure, go ahead.
You can speak.
When I have, when this property have demolition, I go to town board, they give me half years. From this time, I have guy who come and cut grass every two weeks, beautiful. This man, approximately three months ago, grass, grass garden, everything, I take care. Everything okay. He call to town hall to Patrick and tell, look, his grass come to my property. He, no, you understand me, weeds come to his property. I bring my son immediately, when, yeah, and they give me ticket. Town hall give me ticket, hundred dollars. I come to officer woman, expensive, she tell me, Yuri, somebody claim you from another side. I, I believe to God. I tell you true, exactly what happens. We come from, from the back, this across his garage. He come, hey, come in, I am police officer, I am retired police officer, you supposed... I tell, look, I come with my son, we will clean. And what happens? What happens? My, from this fence, we don't have nothing, we have couple vets from my fence. I clean his property between his garage to my fence, maybe ten tires, so much garbage. Cut his, cut his, his garbage, his vets inside, between, not now my property, his property. And I pay hundred dollars for clean his, this guy property. And he tell, this very bad words with me. I don't believe it, this guy can tell this.
Yuri, Yuri, I got pictures.
Just a minute.
I got pictures.
Just a minute.
All right, guys, we're not gonna argue, sir, sir, we're not gonna argue and scream and yell back and forth at each other.
If this, if this only board wants pictures, I will give them pictures of what was growing in the back. And I'll show the deck and everything. You can't deny what is on the picture, Yuri. You haven't taken care of that property.
I clean your property. After couple minutes come and you see so many garbage.
Listen, listen, you live in...
Okay, guys, I think we understand.
I live in Scranton, Pennsylvania, that's where I live.
Excuse me, sir, sir, I'm pretty sure we understand there's a maintenance problem going on there. I think we understand that.
There's more to that. There's ordinance violations that should be...
All right, but again, that's, doesn't have anything to do with whether it's three family or not.
That's my problem, if he's gonna own the house and rent it and do all that, it's not gonna be kept up. Thank you.
I have a question based on some of the testimony. Yuri, has there been, I mean, we're going, was it two thousand two or two thousand twelve this started?
He bought it in two thousand two, he said, or his sister bought it in two thousand two.
Since then, has there been any effort to sell this as a single family and it failed? And we need to allow it to be a three? Or has that not happened yet?
If you can go back to the microphone over here, please.
Yeah, I'm so sorry because I'm a little bit upset.
In the time of ownership, has there been any effort made to sell this as a single family home?
Not three family.
That hasn't been tried? Because some of the concern is that even though it's a large home, there are large comparable homes in the neighborhood and it's not that it can't...
I will, I will tell you right now what, what, what the best way what we can have. I give to real estate, I will give to real estate this company, this house. When real, we don't want too much for this money, for this house, not too much. When somebody will buy one family, we don't touch. When somebody buy three family, what my, my relative will buy three family. But I suppose have answer approximately after one month. When he will buy for three family, one family, he cannot, he don't need. We will replace only close second and third floor. If you have another way from the big porch, you understand me? And three, three entrance, no, first from the center and two from the back. We have three entrance for each floor.
I understand there's, there's one person interested and they would require it to be a three unit.
Yes.
My, the bigger question is, was there any effort made to sell this as is? Single family, doesn't seem like the neighbors would have an issue with a new owner or a change of zoning. Has, has that been tried?
You understand me, we don't, I put sign, I put sign outside for three family. Nobody doesn't call me two, by, by owner. But right now I will take real estate from Scranton. If find somebody who can buy this house. Because I'm retired, my sister sick, she have heart attack because when she know house suppose go to demolition, she had heart attack. And when, when, when town will put house for demolition, so many people come rob this house, stolen all equipment, all floor, all tiles, all Malbar what she bought, all... Very bad condition they did house. People from outside Scranton. But right now I fix everything beautiful, everything nice inside. And we will fix outside too, looks as historical house. We have all parts. And I help the people who can buy this house, I can help. Because we have all drawing nineteen hundred, from nineteen hundred, from this architect who built this house.
I think we all understand what you're looking to do. I think it'd be best if you did list this with a realtor, if you found a buyer that was local and was gonna live in this house. And they came back to us at that point, when you had a buyer that was actually gonna live in, live in this house or in our area and was gonna maintain this house. I think the neighbors would feel a little bit better instead of just, just kinda assuming someone's gonna come take this as a three unit, fix it up. There's just a lot of, lot of what ifs.
Yes, we will, yes. My relative, my relative, he, he will buy this house and live in first floor and second and third floor, he will give for rent.
Did you wanna speak, sir? Come on. He's gonna speak when... You raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truths to help you God?
Yes.
Name and address.
My name is Keith Yenser, I live at fifteen sixty-one Sanderson Avenue. And the reason why I decided, I was here for the first one, with the fifteen fifty four floor. And since we didn't do that, I'm listening to what we hear here. What I'm hearing here is, I'm similar, my house is twice the size of your house you're talking about. I love that house, that one he's talking about. What happens is, I'm saying, maybe we need a compromise. Could he find a person that wants to live there? Instead of making it a three family, just make it a two family. And I know why he's doing that, because it's such a large house. In order for him to basically take care of it or to renovate it, he's gonna have to have a lot of income coming in. All right, well, the tenants, the neighborhoods do not want a three family. So could you find a buyer that would basically buy it as a, they own it? And they rent out the other floors, a two family. So this way you can have the income and maybe you could find a buyer. So you hit on that by going to a realtor, maybe we can get a realtor to do that. And I think that would solve this problem. All right, because I already spoke to them and I know the community, they don't mind a two family. But I mean, when you start going with a three family, you would have some problems with it. So I think it would be a great compromise if you can get a person to purchase it, live it there, take care of it. They would take care of the other fellow with the mess and all that other stuff. And he has some money to actually afford the house unless he's a millionaire.
How do you feel about the two units, sir?
Three hundred thousand. This everything inside, new roof, new windows, new shit truck, new plumbing, new heating, air conditioning, deck, ducts, everything inside finished. And wall have approximately two feet brick wall from foundation to the top, to the top of the building. They shame, this building cost big, big money, but we don't need this money, we need little bit. I will help my sister at all because she...
I think what the board is saying is, is too much of an unknown at this point. That if you had a buyer, you had a written contract with a buyer.
Yes.
And that buyer comes in and that buyer can explain to the board what they wanna do.
Okay, we can do it this way.
I think, because right now we're, you know, over here, over here, over here, we really don't have anything concrete. I think, I think you need to produce a buyer first. And I think that's what Chairman Walsh was getting at. Am I right? first. And I think that's what Chairman Walsh was getting at. Am I right?
But-
Yes, you're definitely right.
On that note, Dan, as opposed to us voting and, you know, maybe getting an unfavorable result, is there a better way to handle that in case somebody does wanna come back in that situation and then they're not up against a past?
We can continue this to a, you give them three months to get a buyer. We can continue it to January if you want. It's up to you guys to decide.
That's just my thought is-
Length of time.
A potential buyer may be upset to hear that it didn't go possibly well tonight.
How far, how long of a period was it given by the Housing Appeals Board, though?
I have no idea.
So I mean, we don't wanna give him three months if he only has two left. I don't know how long he has left when he was there. I don't think that's our problem, really, right? Well, we can't extend over their ruling. I think it came from a judge, I'm pretty sure. You know what I'm saying? If they're only giving him two more months, we can't go three.
It's a different board. We could-
Yeah.
Can we just continue it month to month?
If he's saying he has a buyer, if he's saying he has a buyer, let's bring him next month.
Continue it to next month with, bring the buyer you say you have.
Yes, I have, but-
I mean, you're not gonna have anything to do with this project once you sell the house. He will.
The board wants to hear from your buyer, not from you.
We need to hear from the buyer.
Yeah, but you understand me, he, he tell me when you, when I have decision from zoning board for three family house, I can buy. This is my relative.
Okay, well, here's what you do. You enter into a contract with him, a written contract, that he will buy it contingent on this board giving him a three family unit. And if they don't, then he doesn't have to buy it. He doesn't lose anything. And if they do, then he has to go through with the, with the deal.
Okay.
Okay? They understand the board wants something more concrete than, there's a buyer out there that'll buy it for three families. We don't know that. We wanna see it in writing. We wanna see an actual contract. And we wanna hear from the buyer.
But how can I, okay, right now, when I go to proximity real estate, real estate, this is the same can happen, so he cannot sell looks three family or he supposed put on advertising one family.
He can advertise it as a possible three family, okay? Subject to this board's approval. And that buyer, if that buyer is interested in three families, they have, write up a contract that says if they get the three family, they have to complete the deal. If they don't get the three family, they don't have to complete the deal.
So you can ask us for a continuance, or we can take a vote on it. What would you like us to do?
I, I ask zoning board put decision for three family. When I sell looks one family, this doesn't change nothing.
No, no. We're saying you can market it as three family. Get a buyer, and then come back.
I see. Okay, okay, okay.
Okay.
And I suppose pay more for hundred dollars for-
No, that's why you're gonna ask now if we could, if you can continue it for another month to, for you to find that buyer.
Give me, give me not another month, give me-
Two months?
Three, three months.
Three months?
Yes. Because he, he go right now to Russia, he supposed find money, you understand me? Find money not for this house.
Right.
For, replace this house.
Okay, so you're requesting a continuance for three months. The board will have to, the board will have to decide whether they wanna continue it for three months.
Okay.
That's his request.
Yeah, maybe this can-
So do we, we have to vote on that?
Yes.
Board, every month, maybe, maybe we can go early. I don't know, when he come from Russia, we can go early too.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we continue this.
I don't understand what he's requesting here.
Yeah.
He's requesting a continuance of tonight's hearing for three months for him to produce that buyer.
He was just asking something else, and I wasn't-
Then he was saying, what if I get the buyer within two months? You can come back early.
Two months or one month?
Well, then we'll make the motion to continue it for up to three months then. So if you come back next month, great. If you come back in two months, we, and now we have to vote on the continuance. So I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion. Well, hold on one second.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes. You've been approved for a continuance up to three months. And I think the gentleman wants his pictures back if we can, Dan has them? This gentleman has your pictures right down here. Meetings adjourned. Thank you.
Mr. McKeeon, you know where to find a relative of mine for that a hundred bucks when it gets sold?